Coffee steam and a moving mind. Chasing dreams we're here to find. Calm but bright as hours roll on. We stay focused in the electric dawn. Soft glow cutting through the haze. New sparks guiding all our days. Keep the rhythm, keep it strong. We fall forward with the electric dawn. Breathe it in, let the moment stay. A gentle current clears the way. One more beat and we move on. Wide awake in the electric dawn. Electric dawn. Let the colors flow. Guiding every step we go. Steady beats that keep us on. We rise again with the electric dawn. Electric dawn.
Racing through the skyline. Neon in my eyes. City breathing softly underneath the night. Rhythm in the pavement. Shadows come alive. Every light is calling, telling me to fly. And we rise and we fall, chasing every heartbeat through it all. In the dark we ignite, running with the wind beneath the lights. Skyline drift, take me higher than the clouds tonight. Feel the lift, every moment pulling me to life. Let it shift, all the colors moving in the night. Skyline drift, skyline drift. We're alive in the skyline drift. Echoes in the distance, floating through the air. Electric intuition, pulling everywhere. Lost inside the motion, drifting with the sound. Skyline always guiding when the world spins round. Then we rise and we fall, chasing every heartbeat through it all. In the dark we ignite, running with the wind beneath the lights. Skyline drift, take me higher than the clouds tonight. Feel the lift, every moment pulling me to life. Let it shift, all the colors moving in the night. Skyline drift, skyline drift. We're alive in the skyline drift. Through the night, we glide. With the sky by our side. Through the night, we glide. In the drift, forever bright.
Lights on screams the world awake. Hands on keys, no time to wait. Heartbeat sinks with neon glow. Chasing dreams, we're in the flow. Every pulse, another spark. In the night, we leave our mark. Focus sharp, we ride away. In this moment, we create. Know the vibe, let the rhythm rise. Through the lines, we ignite the skies. Know the vibe, feel the energy. Working dreams become melody. Silent hours, but minds allowed. Building hopes among the cloud. Baseline hums beneath our grind. In the beat, our fate align. Every pulse, another spark. In the night, we leave our mark. Focus sharp, we ride away. In this moment, we create. Know the vibe, let the rhythm rise. Through the lines, we ignite the skies. Know the vibe, feel the energy. Working dreams become melody. Close your eyes, hear the sound. Let your spirit dream about. Count the beats, one, two, three, four. And we dive for something more. Know the vibe, let the rhythm rise. Through the lines, we ignite the skies. Know the vibe, feel the energy. Working dreams become melody.
Soft light fading from the setting sun. Night begins, but the work's not done. Quiet streets where the shadows hung. We keep moving on this afterglow run. Breathing in the cooling air. Every moment feels aware. Steps align as the hours come. Riding steady on the afterglow run. Afterglow run. Moving through the night with a calm embrace of fading light. Steady beats as our minds stay one. We stay focused on the afterglow run. Laptop glow on an open page. Thoughts unfold as we disengage. City sounds falling one by one. We find rhythm in the afterglow run. Breathing in the cooling air. Every moment feels aware. Steps align as the hours come. Riding steady on the afterglow run. Afterglow run, moving through the night. With a calm embrace of fading light. Steady beats as our minds stay one. We stay focused on the afterglow run. Hold the flow, let the moment stay. Whispers guide the quiet way. One more beat and the mind is spun. Deeper into the afterglow run. Afterglow run, moving through the night. With a calming embrace of fading light. Steady beats as our minds stay one. We stay focused on the afterglow run.
Racing through the skyline. Neon in my eyes. City breathing softly underneath the night. Rhythm in the pavement. Shadows come alive. Every light is calling, telling me to fly. And we rise and we fall, chasing every heartbeat through it all. In the dark, we ignite, running with the wind beneath the light. Skyline drift, take me higher than the clouds tonight. Feel the lift, every moment pulling me to life. Let it shift, all the colors moving in the night. Skyline drift, skyline drift. We're alive in the skyline drift. Echoes in the distance, floating through the air. Electric intuition pulling everywhere. Lost inside the motion, drifting with the sound. Skyline always guiding when the world spins around. And we rise and we fall, chasing every heartbeat through it all. In the dark, we ignite, running with the wind beneath the light. Skyline drift, take me higher than the clouds tonight. Feel the lift, every moment pulling me to life. Let it shift, all the colors moving in the night. Skyline drift, skyline drift. We're alive in the skyline drift. Through the night, we glide. With the skyline by our side. Through the night, we glide. In the drift, forever bright.
City hum beneath the morning glow. Dreams awake as the currents flow. Quiet steps as the day ignites. We rise gently with the fusion lights. Soft beams cutting through the gray. Every moment finds its way. Hold the pace, keep spirits bright. We move forward in the fusion lights. Fusion lights, guiding every breath we take. Through the calm, a brighter wake. Steady rhythms through the highs. We stay focused in the fusion lights. Coffee warmth and a steady mind. New ideas we aim to find. Calm and clear as the hours climb. We fall deeper in productive time. Soft beams cutting through the gray. Every moment finds its way. Hold the pace, keep spirits bright. We move forward in the fusion lights. Fusion lights, guiding every breath we take. Through the calm, a brighter wake. Steady rhythms through the highs. We stay focused in the fusion lights. Breathe it in, let the colors glide. Every spark begins to shine. One more beat and the mind unites. Flowing freely in the fusion lights. Fusion lights.
Feel the pulse beneath the neon sky. Every heartbeat racing high. Shadows fade as the colors glow. We dive deep into the hyperflow. Rising faster, light expanding. Gravity can't keep us landing. Hold your breath now, let it go. We're alive inside the hyperflow. Hyperflow, let the rhythm take control. Light it up, let your spirit overflow. In the surge, feel the energy explode. We are one inside the hyperflow. Speed of sound beneath our feet. Lost in waves where echoes meet. Time dissolves as the circuits show. We're locked into the hyperflow. Rising faster, light expanding. Gravity can't keep us landing. Hold your breath now, let it go. We're alive inside the hyperflow. Hyperflow, let the rhythm take control. Light it up, let your spirit overflow. In the surge, feel the energy explode. We are one inside the hyperflow. Take me higher, higher through the night. Feel the current pulling into life. Count it down, three, two, one, let's go. And we fall back into hyperflow. Hyperflow. Drive slow. Drive a flow. Hyperflow, let the rhythm take control. Light it up, let your spirit overflow. In the surge, feel the energy explode. We are one inside the hyperflow.
Headlights on the highway, cutting through the dark. City in the distance, beating like a spark. Cold breeze on the window, music in the air. Every mile I'm taking. Losing every care. And I feel the glow. Rising like a fire in my soul. Let the rhythm guide. As we're moving through the night. Midnight drive, take me anywhere the stars align. Feel the light, running with the pulse inside. Let it rise, echo through the neon lights. Midnight drive, midnight drive. We belong in the midnight drive. We belong in the midnight drive. Running through the night. Breathing in the silence, blending with the sound. Every fading moment Spinning all around. Reflections on the dashboard Shimmer as we glide. Chasing all the echoes On this endless ride. And I feel the glow Rising like a fire in my soul. Let the rhythm guide As we're moving through The night. Midnight drive. Take me anywhere the stars align. Feel the light Running with the pulse inside. Let it rise. Echo through the neon lights. Midnight drive. Midnight drive. We belong in the midnight drive. Don't rewind, midnight drifting in my mind. Hold on tight, feel the light Living in this midnight drive.
City lights awaken, glowing through the night. Heartbeat starts to rise. Colors come alive. Every step electric, moving with the beat. Feel the neon calling, pulling at my feet. And I know, I know Something in the air is taking control. Let it flow. Let it glow. Racing through my veins like fire and gold. Neon pulse Running through my soul. Lighting up the dark, making me whole. Turn it up. Let the rhythm unfold. We ignite. We ignite In the neon glow. Shadows start to fade As frequencies collide. Every moment rising, echoing my mind. Lost inside the motion, drifting with the sun. Neon keeps on flashing, lifting off the ground. And I know, I know Something in the air is taking control. Let it flow. Let it glow. Racing through my veins like fire and gold. Neon pulse Running through my soul. Lighting up the dark, making me whole. Turn it up. Let the rhythm unfold. We ignite. We ignite In the neon glow. Take me higher. Take me higher. Neon pulse forever brighter. Take me higher. Take me higher. Neon pulse forever brighter.
Quiet streets beneath the silver glow. Late night at hours moving slow. Typing beats while the stars behave. We rise steady on the night wave. Soft reflections in the screenlight haze. Motion rising through the silent maze. Keep the rhythm, find your way. Focus deep in the night wave sway. Night wave Carrying us through the dark. Every spark becoming whole. Steady flow in the world we play. We move forward on the night wave.
Calm winds drift through the window side. Thoughts alike, falling into stride. Clear your mind, let the patterns say Your momentum in the night wave. Soft reflections in the screenlight haze. Motion rising through the silent maze. Keep the rhythm, find your way. Focus deep in the night wave sway. Carrying us through the dark. Every spark becoming whole. Steady flow in the world we play. We move forward on the night wave. Reach low, let the darkness go. Riding currents on the quiet tide. One more beat and the moment stays. Hold your focus in the night wave. Night wave Carrying us through the dark. Every spark becoming whole. Steady flow in the world we play. We move forward on the night wave.
Morning light on the city lines. Slow pulse rising through the signs. Quiet steps in a world reborn. We move steady with the electric dawn. Soft glow cutting through the haze. New sparks guiding all our days. Keep the rhythm, keep it strong. We fall forward with the electric dawn. Electric dawn. Let the colors flow. Guiding every step we go. Steady beats that keep us on. We rise again with the electric dawn.
Coffee steam and a moving mind. Chasing dreams we're here to find. Calm but bright as hours roll on. We stay focused in the electric dawn. Soft glow cutting through the haze. New sparks guiding all our days. Keep the rhythm, keep it strong. We fall forward with the electric dawn. Breathe it in, let the moment stay. A gentle current clears the way. One more beat and we move on. Wide awake in the electric dawn. Electric dawn. Let the colors flow. Guiding every step we go. Steady beats that keep us on. We rise again with the electric dawn. Electric dawn.
Racing through the skyline. Neon in my eyes. City breathing softly Underneath the night. Rhythm in the pavement. Shadows come alive. Every light is calling, telling me to fly. And we rise and we fall, chasing every heartbeat through it all. In the dark we ignite, running with the wind beneath the lights. Skyline drift. Take me higher than the clouds tonight. Feel the lift. Every moment pulling me to life. Let it shift. All the colors moving in the night. Skyline drift. Skyline drift. We're alive in the skyline drift.
Echoes in the distance, floating through the air. Electric intuition Pulling everywhere. Lost inside the motion, drifting with the sun. Skyline always guiding When the world spins round. Then we rise and we fall, chasing every heartbeat through it all. In the dark we ignite, running with the wind beneath the lights. Skyline drift. Take me higher than the clouds tonight. Feel the lift. Every moment pulling me to life. Let it shift. All the colors moving in the night. Skyline drift. Skyline drift. We're alive in the skyline drift. Through the night, we glide. And the drift Forever bright.
Lights on screens, the world awake. Hands on keys, no time to wait. Heartbeat sinks when neon glow. Chasing dreams, we're in the flow. Every pulse, another spark. In the night, we leave our mark. Focus sharp, we ride away. In this moment, we create. Know the vibe, let the rhythm rise. Through the lines, we ignite the skies. Know the vibe, feel the energy. Working dreams become melody.
Silent hours, but minds aloud. Building hopes among the cloud. Baseline hums beneath our grind. In the beat, our fatal line. Every pulse, another spark. In the night, we leave our mark. Focus sharp, we ride away. In this moment, we create. Know the vibe, let the rhythm rise. Through the lines, we ignite the skies. Know the vibe, feel the energy. Working dreams become melody.
Close your eyes, hear the sound. Let your spirit dream abound. Count the beats, one, two, three, four. And we dive for something.
And we dive for something more Know the vibe, let the rhythm rise Through the lines, we ignite the skies Know the vibe, feel the energy Working dreams become melody Soft light fading from the setting sun Night begins, but the work's not done Quiet streets where the shadows hum We keep moving on this afterglow run Breathing in the cooling air Every moment feels aware Steps align as the hours come Riding steady on the afterglow run Afterglow run Moving through the night With a calm embrace of fading light Steady beats as our minds stay one We stay focused on the afterglow run Laptop glow on an open page Thoughts unfold as we disengage City sounds falling one by one We find rhythm in the afterglow run Breathing in the cooling air Every moment feels aware Steps align as the hours come Riding steady on the afterglow run Afterglow run Moving through the night With a calm embrace of fading light Steady beats as our minds stay one We stay focused on the afterglow run Hold the flow, let the moment stay Whispers guide the quiet way One more beat and the mind is spun Deeper into the afterglow run Afterglow run Moving through the night With a calm embrace of fading light Steady beats as our minds stay one We stay focused on the afterglow run
Racing through the skyline Neon in my eyes City breathing softly underneath the night Rhythm in the pavement Shadows come alive Every light is calling, telling me to fly And we rise and we fall Chasing every heartbeat through it all In the dark, we ignite Running with the wind beneath the lights Skyline drift Take me higher than the clouds tonight Feel the lift Every moment pulling me to life Let it shift All the colors moving in the night Skyline drift, skyline drift We're alive in the skyline drift Echoes in the distance Floating through the air Electric intuition pulling everywhere Lost inside the motion Drifting with the sound Skylight always guiding When the world spins round And we rise and we fall Chasing every heartbeat through it all In the dark, we ignite Running with the wind beneath the lights Skyline drift Take me higher than the clouds tonight Feel the lift Every moment pulling me to life Let it shift All the colors moving in the night Skyline drift, skyline drift We're alive in the skyline drift Through the night, we glide With the skyline by our side Through the night, we glide In the drift, forever bright
City hum beneath the morning glow Dreams awake as the currents flow Quiet steps as the day ignites We rise gently With the fusion lights Soft beams cutting through the gray Every moment finds its way Hold the pace, keep spirits bright We move forward In the fusion lights Fusion lights Guiding every breath we take Through the calm but brighter wake Steady rhythms through the highs We stay focused In the fusion light Coffee warmth and a steady mind New ideas we aim to find Calm and clear as the hours climb We fall deeper In productive time Soft beams cutting through the gray Every moment finds its way Hold the pace, keep spirits bright We move forward In the fusion lights Fusion lights Guiding every breath we take Through the calm but brighter wake Steady rhythms through the highs We stay focused In the fusion lights Breathe it in, let the colors glide Every spark begins to shine One more beat and the mind unites Flowing freely In the fusion lights Fusion lights
Feel the pulse beneath the neon sky Every heartbeat racing high Shadows fade as the colors glow We dive deep into the hyperflow Rising faster, light expanding Gravity can't keep us landing Hold your breath now, let it go We're alive Inside the hyperflow